All right, feel what?
Okay, we are ready to start the meeting. This is a regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for 17 January 2024. Notice has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and sending a copy to the Montclair Times, Star Ledger, and Herald News. This is a public hearing in which any members of the public are welcome to attend. The meeting agenda is available on the Montclair website, as is a link to the township's YouTube channel where the hearing can be viewed live or after the fact. The hearing is also being televised on Channel 34.
Role call.
Okay, I'll do the role call now. William Harrison.
Here.
John McCullough.
Here.
John Caulfield.
Here.
Jay Church.
Here.
Angela Harris.
Here.
Jonathan Moore. Jerry Simon.
Here.
Sebastian Vieira.
Here.
Michael Sullivan.
Here.
Michael, you'll start.
So this is the reorganization of the Montclair Zoning Board of Adjustment. The first order of business is to elect a chair. Is there any nominations for chair?
I move the election to William Harrison.
Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations.
Okay, next is to elect a vice chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate John McCullough.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
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 We have secretary, assistant secretary, and I guess Janice's secretary and Hussein's...
Yes.
Assistant secretary. Can we do those together? Does someone want to move?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman. The secretary and assistant secretary, the secretary being Janice Tally, the assistant secretary being...
Hussein Farva.
What she said.
Second. Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are going to defer the minutes until the next meeting while we get squared away as to precisely what we did with the Montclair Kimberly application. Mr. Sullivan and I have reached a consensus as to what we did, and just want to make sure the minutes accurately reflect that. So, we do not have any resolutions tonight, correct? And so, we have a request for a, for two one-year extensions from, for the Barclay application on Walnut Street. This was for removal of a non-residential building and building a multifamily residential building in the rear of the property and keeping the existing residential building in the front of the property. We received a letter from Mr. Trembleak, and unless the board members have questions, comments, any issues with that...
I do have a question. The request is for two one-year extensions?
Yeah, so, so under the municipal land use law, when you get final site plan approval, you're entitled to a two-year protection from changes in the ordinance. Once that, once you get past the two years, you're entitled to three one-year extensions, but you're allowed to ask for more than one-year extension even after it's expired. So the applicants ask for two one-year extensions for the protection period.
Got it, okay.
Which would bring them till November of 20, of this year, 2024. And they would still be entitled to an additional one-year extension, but hopefully I'll be driving by and seeing their building.
Me too.
Question about that. Is it just they have the time period to start construction or has to be completed in that time period?
No, it's, it's just protection from changes in the ordinance. Has nothing to do with that at this point.
Any other discussion? If not, someone want to make a motion?
How should, how should the motion be framed?
To grant the request for two one-year extensions to the prior final site plan approval protection.
Okay, move for the approval of the two-year extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions?
Thank you very much.
The first application is the continuation of the public hearing for the property at 167 Harrison Avenue. Say it's the applicant here, but I physically see them, so I'm going to... Board, and we're, we left off, we had largely completed the hearing. You had requested additional time to address the questions that came from the board as to whether a second means of egress was required for the top-floor apartment, and so proceed and give us the answer.
So, let me just, could you state your appearance, please?
Sure. Good evening, this is Sam Bellamy. I'm the professional planner with the application from Justina Robin.
Good evening, my name is Ephraim Gabriel. I'm the architect on the application.
And you both testified at the November hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, you understand you're still under oath?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so why don't you proceed?
I guess the first thing, we had five, I believe, commissioners at the last hearing, so we wanted to confirm if there were seven eligible commissioners here tonight.
There are.
So, so we have eight board members, so the non-voting member is going to be whom? Did you sign? Mr. Moore? Okay, so Mr. Moore is not eligible, but the remaining seven members are eligible. Let's just confirm that.
So I received a certificate from Angela Harris, Ms... And Jerry Simone.
Okay, so that should be, that's everybody, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody but Mr. Moore is eligible. So you have seven eligible members. This is a D1 use variance. You do need five affirmative votes.
Great, thank you.
And just for the record, Mr. Moore did arrive and admits that, so that's...
So, we could start off by answering the question regarding the egress. We heard your request and we approached the town to confirm our code analysis. We spoke to Mr. Rahim, fire subcode official. We also spoke to Mr. Luis Rodriguez, building subcode official, and we confirmed that the only, that one mean of egress would be sufficient, and since we're rehabilitating the attic apartment, this will be a limited area system installed on, in, on the third floor only. And that way it's, it's code compliant, so one mean of egress and limited area sprinkler system on the third floor.
And do you have other information you want to provide to the board?
I think the only other thing we were asked to confirm were those setbacks. So from Tichner Place, it is 0.09. The survey was accurate and a site plan was updated to show that. And then the setback from Harrison Avenue was two feet nine and a quarter inches to the new dormer that we're proposing on the third floor.
I'm sorry, what was that measurement again?
0.09 to Tichner Place. And two feet nine and a quarter inches to Harrison Avenue.
Okay, that's its closest part, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so can we just go through, I, I just want to make sure I've got the relief that you're requesting. So there is a D1 use variance for expanding, you know, expanding this mixed use, which is not permitted. We just went through the two front yard setbacks, and those are variances that are required. And there's also that 36-inch tall guard rail. That's also the variance, is that correct?
Yeah, that's within the side yard setback area where six feet's required. So since we're adding essentially new bulk, we're requesting the relief there.
And the, the building height will then be three stories where a maximum of two and a half stories is allowed?
That's correct. With the addition of the dormer, it becomes a full third story rather than a half story under the definitions.
And then finally, there's an exception for parking space width of eight feet where a minimum of nine feet is required.
That's correct.
Is that everything?
That's everything I had, yep.
That's what I had.
So I, I think that, that's the extent of our new testimony. Everything else remained the same. We can certainly provide a summary, or if there were any questions from the, the board members that weren't there last time, we'd be happy to answer them as well.
I have a couple of questions to clarify my little notes. I have a note about a setback which I assume is to the rear property line, and not sure the number I wrote down, I'm not sure where the decimal point belongs.
So the rear yard setback, we have 28.75 feet where 25 feet's required.
I'm going to have to figure out my note, and the... And how far will the new dormer be from Harrison Avenue?
That's the two feet nine and a quarter inch, inches.
One quarter or three quarters?
One quarter.
Other board members have questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I didn't really understand or hear clearly the exception for the third-floor egress.
So, since this is a rehabilitation, you know, falls under the rehab code of New Jersey, and since the third floor is the area of work, and, and since it's, it's an existing condition where one mean of egress is provided, and since it's becoming a full story, no longer half a story per definition, we're required to provide a limited area sprinkler system in the third floor, in the area of work.
So, there's still just one egress?
So, yes, it is one egress. This hasn't changed, but we did enhance the life and safety by simply enlarging the windows. As you, as you see now, the existing condition, the, the current windows are not, are no egress windows. So, by elevating that, by providing that dormer, we're increasing the window sizes to allow for egress through the windows.
How do they get to the ground floor? If a fire starts on the third floor and they have a chance to get out, how do they go and jump out the window?
Firefighters will have to bring them down, and that's what the code allows.
Other questions from members of the board?
Role call. Yeah, I just want to follow up on the question Mr. Church is asking, and the response that Mr. Gabriel has given. And, and I think I just would want to register that I, I don't appreciate the shrug of your shoulders.
The what, I'm sorry?
The shrug of your shoulders. I mean, the, my colleague has asked a very important question.
Absolutely.
And I think, I think if you put yourself or your family in that space, and a fire broke out on the third floor, would you accept the answer being that the fire truck has got to arrive in time for your family to escape?
So, the sprinkler, the sprinkler system is designed to fight, to fight the fire without even the, you know, without the intervention of the firefighters. We're talking about life and safety being enhanced. Definitely it is, because we did increase the window sizes, so it is definitely enhanced from before. Before, you couldn't even egress through the windows. Also, in addition, we're providing, per the IBC and per, per the rehab code of New Jersey, we're providing a limited area sprinkler system in order to further enhance and comply with the code for the life and safety of the third-floor space.
And so, you know, I just want to, to be clear that I'm not questioning whether or not your proposal is taking into consideration the safety concerns. What I'm questioning was the way, the manner of the response. That was the, that was, that was the concern that I had. And, I mean, I, I accept the fact that, that you're, you're taking safety precautions, you've indicated that you've increased the size of the windows, you're installing a sprinkler system. I don't know if there are other, you know, things that could be done to add to the safety of those that may be occupying that space. But, you know, obviously, that is tantamount to this board to make sure that if we're giving our stamp of approval, that we know that anybody who's occupying that space is going to have the maximum opportunity to escape, given unfortunate circumstances. That's, that's merely the point that I was trying to raise.
And I appreciate it. I did not mean any offense. I did not mean to offend anyone, but I, we did listen to the board and we did confirm our code analysis. At the end, you know, this is a small building. We're very limited in sort of, you know, what we're providing here, and we did study the option of adding a second mean of egress. It's, it's going to take away a lot of the space. What we're doing by providing a dormer, we're taking away by adding a second stair. And as I, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we are, really, the, the main objective of the owner and of our application is to enhance the overall conditions of the building, providing some green area where it was mostly asphalt, providing stripes for parking. We looked into egress, life and safety, and we're, you know, we will work with the town and the town engineers to make sure we meet all the requirements. We do not take it lightly, like, in terms of life and safety. Yeah, that's given. So, my colleague is reminding me, you know, we, we're also increasing the fire resistance of the stair enclosure that's existing right now. And that's, of course, you know, that's, that's given, you know, we will work all the details out with the engineers and we'll make sure we're complying with the, with what the code requires. So, by adding larger windows, by adding the limited area sprinkler system, we're doing everything we can to bring this current condition to a much better livable and safe condition.
Other questions?
Just one question. When you say limited area, what area is it designed to cover?
Oh, by definition, a limited area sprinkler system is a system that's no more than 20 sprinkler heads, and it's also being fed off the domestic line, meaning it does not have a dedicated fire line from the street. That's, that's what the code defines sprinkler.
So, will the system cover the entire third floor or just the new construction?
Yeah, it's not new construction. It's rehabilitation. It's renovation, yeah. So, it will cover the entire third floor, yes. Hydraulic calculations will be provided, and, you know, it's typical, you know, typical fire, limited area system.
Have you considered a potential, I don't know, smaller fire escape? Have you looked at those options?
We, we did look at this option. It's going to take away from the, the parking space in the back, and, and it will also take away the, the trash area.
Any creative options?
And it will obstruct the windows as well in the back.
Any creative options?
We really, we really did look at it. We studied it, you know, it's, the, I mean, the lot is not big. The, the building is, is very small. And we're trying, we tried as much as possible to bring it to a much safer condition.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Yep. Can you confirm again the existing condition for the fire rating between the business use and the residential use? What is that, the existing and the proposed?
Right now, it's, there is no fire resistance. It's, it's all construction. What we're doing is that we're going to increase, we're going to bring it up to code, and we're going to separate between the residential and the commercial and, you know, and the enclosure of the stair. So, we're also... No, all, all the walls that needs to be fire separated and fire rated will be modified. Currently, there's no fire rating whatsoever.
Okay, so you will provide the two-hour, that's in the code, separation between business and...
Yeah, whatever the code requires, we will make sure we provide the separation required.
Are the second and third floor currently occupied?
The owner cannot make it, but it, right now, it's, the second one, the third one is occupied.
Any other questions from members of the board?
Where, where are the mechanicals for the building located? I don't see them.
There's a, yeah, there's a, currently in the basement, there's the mechanical systems for the existing building. Yeah, we're, we're not really proposing any modification to what's there.
So there won't be any condensers or anything added?
I don't recall seeing any condensers. On the balcony, right? Yeah. It, it will be on the balcony, the new balcony in the back.
Other questions from members of the board? I'm, I'm still working on figuring out my notes. How far is the new dormer from Harrison Avenue at its closest point?
We're showing there two feet five and a quarter inches, but that additional space there is that additional four inches. So it's two feet nine and a quarter inches from Harrison Avenue, and that's that dormer space. Correct, from the front of the facade. Facade, Harrison Avenue is at the bottom of your screen.
So, just to clarify, the, the property line along Harrison, it does not meet the face of the existing building. It's actually, the, the face of the existing building is reset back, and I could, we actually submitted a survey. I don't know if the file is available here.
Yeah, so the building, the building itself is setback 6.96 feet from Harrison Avenue.
In addition, the dormer itself will be set plus, you know, that, that number, the, to be exact, is, where is that number exactly?
6.96.
So, the setback of the existing building is 6.96. The dormer will be set back two feet nine inches and a quarter addition to the 6.96 feet. Thank you.
You haven't testified thus far. You're discussing with your colleagues, so...
Okay, if you want me to, I can, just because I say something.
Sure.
No, it's, it's clear, so the, sorry, can I have the point? So, this is the 6.96 for, this is the setback of the actual building. The dormer will be set back here two feet nine inches and a quarter more than the existing setback of the dormer.
What's the setback from the street?
From the property line. It's of the dorm, not the, not the...
The dormer.
So, it's, two, that's eight, it's almost like nine and change, nine and a quarter. I could do the math right now.
I know, but I feel like we're getting three different numbers, okay? We're trying to determine what relief you're seeking, what front yard setback you're seeking from Harrison Avenue.
9.73, to be exact.
9.73 feet, but it's an increase of 2.9 and a quarter inch. Is that right?
Correct.
And the, the setback from Tichner Place, that, that matches the existing, is that correct, roughly?
Yes. Correct.
So, in my notes, what I wrote down was to have you have at least 10 feet from Harrison, which is 0.27, you know, roughly three inches further than you're showing. Does that pose a problem? Just because I like round numbers.
So... Yeah, we will, so, I mean, the, the dormer wall, we're not really changing what's existing right now, in terms of the actual building setback. The dormer is going to be set back even further.
I understand that.
We will comply with that. We will make sure it's that number that we agreed upon today. It's nine feet. Yeah, yeah, so we'll comply with 9.73. Oh, make it 10 feet even? Sure, I mean, we, we could push it back and make it 10 feet even, so it's a square, you know, square number.
So, you're mentioning the application that you're going to provide a 10-foot front yard setback from Harrison Avenue?
Yes.
And the existing setback from Harrison Avenue is what?
It's...
One second.
The existing is 6.96.
A lot of numbers crossed off, but I think we've got it.
The, the 10 feet makes it a nice round number. That's, that's easy.
Any other questions from members of the board, Mr. Caulfield?
Just kind of like your thoughts on this. I don't know, the utility pole that runs on Harrison Avenue is not necessarily, like, the, the wires of that line go pretty close to the house and those windows that are there. You're concerned about that at all?
So we're actually sitting the building, again, we're, we're sitting the dormer further back. So, it, it will be much safer than what it is right now.
But you will have those, where those windows, existing windows are there today, those, those windows will be there in the future of this new building, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's...
I just would ask maybe for you, this is just off the top, talk to the client. Maybe that utility pole is, is inlet too close to the other way, and the wires are the way they're bending in there. If there is a fire in there and the fire truck has to put up there, it's going to be a little hectic. So just for your own sake, maybe ask to see what the story is with that.
No, and, and I really appreciate the thought. And actually, PCNG started taking this into consideration, and they started asking for a minimum of 15 feet for all new construction. So, that's a great point, yeah.
Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the public who either have questions, statements, anything whatsoever you want to say about the application? Now is your one and only opportunity. Okay, anything further you want to add before we discuss and vote on the application?
Yeah, if we could just provide a brief...
Yeah, if we could just provide a brief recap and just to kind of close it out. You know, really, the intent of this project is we are getting additional floor area by adding the dormer. Really, it is all about creating a more livable, inhabitable unit on the third floor. So with that, we are increasing the life and safety by adding the windows, by adding the fire suppression system. And we did hear your concerns the last hearing. We did go back and confirm everything. So that's really been the first and foremost thought on this project. And just a reminder, the two units are permitted. It's the mixed-use building, so the commercial aspect, which is the non-conforming aspect of this project. I think overall, the site is particularly well-suited for mixed-use building to continue to inhabit this property. And the improvements we're making to the residential unit really does create a better building here for the foreseeable future. So with that, I would ask the board to approve the variance relief in both, that the positive and negative criteria has been met, in my opinion.
We'll start discussion, Mr. Simon. Mr. McCullough.
I'd like to hear from the rest of my colleagues first.
Ms. Harris.
I'm in favor of the D1 variance, because, you know, the commercial aspect has been in existence for a very long time here. And I think that the improvements that you are planning to make on the residential will enhance the building, and the building certainly needs some improvement. So I would be in favor of the other variances as well.
Mr. Caulfield.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Church.
I'm tentatively in favor. I'm just a little concerned about that third floor with the windows. I don't, it doesn't seem to solve the problem in my estimation, but I understand what they're doing. But I would be more comfortable if they had put somehow, if, an escape route down the back. But barring that and listening to what they've said pursuant to the code, I'll vote in favor of it.
Mr. Viera.
I'm also in favor.
Mr. Moore can talk, he just can't vote.
Right, right. I'm generally in favor, but I will have to abstain for my vote.
In favor of the use variance, this has been in existence, as Sarah said, for a very long time. I think they're enhancing the property. You know, I don't think the addition is going to have a substantial detriment to the public good or substantially impair the zone plan. I, with the conditions I'm about to say, I don't have a problem with the bulk variances. You know, the conditions I think we should impose are, to start with, that the dormer be no, be at least 10 feet off the Harrison Avenue property line and stay within the Tichner property line, because the building is basically right on the property line, give or take half an inch or so. The, that the railing on the deck, whatever you want to call it, be at least six feet from the south property line. We, you know, have been trying to keep these upper-story balconies, whatever you want to call them, so they're not peering too much into the next-door neighbor's backyard. And, you know, I think we should be consistent on that. That the stormwater at the rear of the building be directed to the proposed vegetated areas, and that's it.
Is there any of the planning considerations forward that you have in the October 25 memo?
Be carried forward? Or they all were dealt with? The... Okay, so the, yeah, I, well, let's make the... I'm not, I'm not sure, but it doesn't hurt to... The... That two and three be complied with. I think, I know they adjusted the pavement in the rear, and they indicated they were changing the signage, and I don't know that I need them to fully comply with the ordinance. I'm not sure the signage on that building has ever been fully in compliance. The applicant testified that he was going to improve it, and I think we can leave it at that, okay? Any further discussion among the board members? If not, someone want to make a motion?
I'll move approval with the conditions set by the chair.
Is there a second? Second. I'm gonna call the roll, just so...
William Harrison?
Yes.
John McCullough?
Yes.
John Caulfield?
Yes.
Jay Church?
Yes.
Angela Harris?
Yes.
Jerry Simon?
Yes.
Sebastian Viera?
Yes.
That'd be all.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Next application is out of Montclair Kimberly Academy. This is a continuation, and after we granted what I will call partial approval the last time, coming in with revised plans to reflect the modifications that were made in the application at the last hearing. Mr. Trembleak, do you want to give your appearance?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Alan Trembleak appearing on behalf of Montclair Kimberly Academy. It was, my understanding where we left off, Mr. Chairman, as the board will recall, we originally presented this site plan application, which proposed essentially two significant changes to the upper school campus on Lloyd Road. One component of the site plan was the enlargement or expansion of the STEM Center building and some site improvements adjacent to that building, sort of in the center of the campus, if you will. And the second significant component of the original site plan was the construction of a new driveway on the south side, which would lead around the back of the campus to the existing parking lot in the rear. As you'll recall, at the end of the last meeting in December, we withdrew the application for approval with regard to the driveway and leading to the rear, as well as all of the retaining walls, significant retaining walls that would have been associated with the, with the construction of that driveway. And we requested that the board simply grant site plan approval for the expansion of the STEM Center and the other site improvements in the vicinity of that building. Board decided, as I understand it, to grant us only preliminary site plan approval, with the request that we come back with revised plans and seek final approval. We've submitted revised architectural plans, as well as revised site plan drawings, and we're prepared to review them with the board this evening. And that's my understanding as to where we concluded, how we concluded.
You agree?
Well, good. Okay. So the plans, which we'll discuss this evening, I think you'll see, they're fully, they're fully conforming. I don't believe we require any variances. We can meet all the conditional use requirements by eliminating the additional driveway. We do, we will end up seeking, I think, three or four minor site plan waivers, but no variances. So what I'd like to do this evening is to recall our professional, our architect, Rob Douglas, following his testimony. I would also call the site engineer, Brian Perry, to discuss the revised plans, which the board has. And as we did with the last meeting, we have a PowerPoint presentation to assist with our presentation this evening, and I have copies to hand out to the board.
And Mr. Trembleak, while you're doing that, just one modification of your description of what we did. The other thing that we did was we modified the prior approval of this board to increase the number of students and faculty and staff that are allowed on the site. Correct. There were conditions I neglected to mention. I mean, there are other conditions, but the fact we modified a prior approval is a significant consequence.
Right. I agree.
I have, we're up to A3, exactly.
A3 is what I have, yeah. Okay.
We're one short. John doesn't.
Okay, if I might, then I would recall Rob Douglas.
I understand you're still under oath. I'm just gonna ask, when you talk about the exceptions that you're seeking, that you clearly delineate what you're asking for, and the ordinance section there from...
I do understand that I'm still under oath. Mr. Trembleak might have to help me with the ordinance sections.
Okay. Rob, you prepared and submitted revised plans to this board following the December 6 meeting, correct?
That's correct.
You prepared to review those plans with the board tonight?
That's correct.
All right, and you've prepared a PowerPoint to assist with the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll ask you to review the revised plans with the board with the assistance of the PowerPoint, and to try to focus on the changes to the previous plans, without reviewing all of the plans all over again, but focusing on the aspects of the plans that have been revised. You can take it from there.
Is this working? Yep. So I will, we've included pretty much all of the, almost every slide from the last presentation, just for the sake of your convenience, really, if you want to go back and review anything. I'll pass through them and just say there's no changes on this slide. This is the site plan, the civil engineers' version of the site plan, so it shows no longer any road around the backside, just the addition here. And the work, essentially, the limit of work is roughly at the edge of the, sort of the tangent point of the gym here, and the street, and then back up into here. So there's landscape work that extends out to the street, but otherwise, otherwise not beyond that, that point of the gym. These plans have not changed at all, so the general concept of the building, the layout of the building, the space allocation of the building, none of that has changed. It's still classrooms, lab spaces, faculty support rooms, those kinds of spaces. So nothing, nothing new or different there. We did change the materiality in this rendering of this roof screen to be consistent with what my testimony was last, last December, because in that, we had indicated that it would be fiberglass panels, but they were still drawn as metal panels. So we clarified, we corrected that in this rendering. That's the only change here. Sorry, went the wrong direction. The projection quality is kind of alarmingly bad on this image. One of the comments in the engineer's report was asking us to clarify the height of the building. The orange line here is much more legible on my plan. Is the average grade prior to the work, and the blue line at the bottom is the average grade after the work. The dimension to the top of the building from average grade is 34 foot six. That's the dimension that the zoning code cares about. So that is actually calculated per the ordinance. We threw in a couple of quick images to these slides, just to sort of show that. They're calculated at 10-foot intervals. This is a sort of overlay of the grading of the existing building. This is an overlay of the grading of the existing wing plus, plus the rest of it. This elevation has not changed at all since the last time you saw it, nor has this perspective, nor has this view, actually. None of this has changed at all. The materiality of the building is still unchanged. We expect the same material pilot that we discussed last time. These renderings have not changed. So what has changed is the landscape plan. So this is the tree demo plan, which the two green trees are pin oaks that are being removed. The weeping cherry is being removed, and then three blue spruces and one Atlantic cedar, which is actually a tree native to Morocco. It's not a native species at all. So the, there are seven trees, there are two major shade trees being removed and five understory trees being removed. The new plan proposes five new shade trees. These are honey locusts around the front. And then the, the pink trees are dogwoods and the orange, I forgot the green ones. I was hoping to be able to read my slide. Those are cherries. We're replacing them with cherry trees. The exact species of cherry tree should be more legible on the plans.
Are all of the new trees proposed native species?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's worth noting that none of the trees we're demolishing are.
Okay.
And that pretty much sums up our landscape and architecture side of the discussion, in terms of changes that we've made.
All right, so you've covered the comments in the engineer's report regarding calculation of building height. It's paragraph 18 in the Boswell Report. And you indicated that the height of the proposed building complies with the ordinance?
It does.
Okay.
And the, the planning review concurred with that.
Right, okay. There is a comment in the Boswell Report, which may have already been dealt with, but I just want to make sure we can sort of cross that off. Comment 21 talks about the fully engineered site plan would be requested contain map location for all air conditioning units, any generators, et cetera, et cetera. The architectural plan indicates the location of the proposed mechanical equipment in elevation view, and the request is that the applicant summarize the type, number, size, and height of the equipment proposed. Mechanical and...
Yes.
Are you able to do that?
Yes, so there's... I think this is actually the shortest place to get to it. The unit in the rather large... The unit in the, the rather large unit in the front is a dedicated outdoor air system. So, that's a unit that brings in fresh air to the building and has a heat recovery wheel that recovers energy from the exhaust air to minimize the wasted energy. The units at the back are chiller units that provide chilled water to the chilled beams that are, provide the primary source of heating and cooling inside the building.
Okay. I believe that's everything in the Boswell report that would fall within your jurisdiction. Another, a number of other comments that Brian Perry can address. So, you've, you're present, you've covered all of the changes in the plans in your testimony.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, no further questions, Mr. Chairman. No questions.
Yeah, in the Boswell report, they reference wall protection. Oh, this, is this for the site walls, number 20?
There are a couple of retaining walls. I think the engineer's going to cover those in his testimony.
Okay.
Can you, on the mean grade, how does that work there? What am I looking at there?
So, this is sort of an odd diagram, because Ellie was trying to figure out how to illustrate what it is. The mean grade is basically an average calculation of the grade at 10-foot intervals around the building. And so, what that line is, is the perimeter of the building with 10-foot intervals. And then, our rabbit model is actually calculating what the grade is at each one of those points, and that's what sets the mean grade.
Okay. I mean, that's a, like, one dimensional drawing, like.
It's a really, it's a really strange drawing. If you could rotate around it, you'd be able to see the other side. It wouldn't be confusing anymore.
Okay. Just bear, just do me a favor. On the, on the drawing that you had, the blue line and the, like, give me an understanding about the lines you're taking for the height, again, on your, the one, the blue line, yeah, the, yeah, but, yeah, that one. So, we're going from the blue line on this, is that correct?
Yes, so we're going from the blue line. There is a dimension string right here on this drawing, which is completely legible in the, in the projection, but which goes from here to the roof, to the roof height.
And that blue line is, how did we determine that blue line? Is that just the mean? Or is that just the grade?
That's the mean grade calculation. So, that, basically, the average of all of those points, all the way around the building, gives a number, and that sets the mean grade.
Gotcha, thank you.
Could you, as I recall, the last time we talked about this, we were changing the roadway to the south, or no, yeah, to the south.
Yeah, we're not doing any of that work anymore.
You're not making a road going all the way around to the parking lot?
Nope, that was all removed.
So, how are they getting to the parking lot? If you're killing the one road, how are you getting them back there?
Well, they already have access to the parking lot on the other side.
Well, could you show me, please? That's what I'd like to.
So, the current configuration, people come in and out of this entry, and the parking lot is here.
Okay. I got you. All right. Is that two-way, right?
Yeah, it's two-way.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question about, can you remind me, the access to the rooftop units? How is that? Hatch, roof catch?
Yeah, roof hatch.
Okay, that's proposed.
Yeah, and there's also, there are other access points elsewhere on this building, so you can actually walk from, from, say, here, or, I mean, you shouldn't, but facilities, people can walk from there over to the side of that.
From one building to the other?
Yeah.
There'll be connections, okay. And then, just to confirm, the two units in the back, they're air-cooled chillers, correct? No cooling tower?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
I'm just looking at the, the comments regarding stormwater management report, and so I guess that says it's currently under review. So, we don't have a copy of that just yet. It hasn't been finalized, or do we?
That's my understanding.
What's that?
That is also a question for the engineer.
The stormwater management review, stormwater management report, that's in the engineer's.
We submitted an updated report, and we also have a comment, a short comment memo from someone from Boswell, with the only comment being that percolation tests must be performed prior to installation of the system, and that condition is totally acceptable to us.
Okay.
That's a memo dated January 15th, 2024, from someone named Sarfien Tanweer, T-A-N-W-E-E-R, from Boswell.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the audience who have any questions for this witness? Want to call your next witness? Yes, thank you, Brian Perry.
And you were sworn in previously. You understand you're still under oath? Yes, I do.
Okay. Brian, your office prepared revised plans that were submitted to the board subsequent to the last meeting in December?
That's correct.
Okay, you prepared to review those plans this evening, particularly the revisions?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to go through that using the PowerPoint?
Sure, I can speak mostly to the slide that's on the screen, which is a color rendering of the site plan from the set. As was noted previously, we did eliminate, remove entirely the secondary or the proposed new access drive around the building. That eliminated, I think, all the variances. What that also did is reduce the total site disturbance from 1.1 acres to 0.5 acres, so a half an acre disturbance for the building addition and associated hardscape improvements, stormwater system. So, what we have now, in terms of impervious coverage, is a net increase of 1,489 square feet approximately, or about a half percent over the site. So, where the existing was 49.75%, we're now at 50.25%. I'll note, the plans actually either have a typo. It says 53%. We're at 50.25%, which either way is really well below the 70% allowable. I think we're at 60-something percent with the, with the road. As far as, we've eliminated all impacts to parking before. I think we're removing a few parking spaces. I think we covered before, because there's not going to be any new staff or any additional students, there really are no proposed impacts to parking. So, accordingly, we're not otherwise impacting any change to existing parking or adding any ADA or EV parking modifications. I think that was a comment in Boswell's memo. Typically, there'd be a change if we were adding parking or removing parking, so we aren't doing either. For site grading, the topography around the site was more impacted with the road. That's actually taken away quite a bit of the site grading and impact. I think maximum slopes are three to one here, which is perfectly, I'm going to say, in line with soil erosion sediment control standards. I think maximum slopes are two to one, which is what we had before. Maximum slopes are now three to one. We are requesting a waiver that really has nothing to do with the onsite grading. It has to do with showing offsite grading within 50 feet. We'd requested that previously. That's section 294-5D.
With the exception of that, your plans comply, or you will comply with all of the other requirements of the steep slope ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Relative to grading, there's retaining walls within the courtyard area and on the outside of the building addition. Comment having to do with height of retaining wall. We did provide additional information showing tops and bottom of the wall. There's still some supplemental information that the engineer was looking for, in particular the maximum heights of the wall. We will label those in the plan, but I can tell you the maximum heights that we're at right now would reach about 4.3 feet in height. Actually, I think we, there's also a requirement that for any wall over four feet, there needs to be stability calculations. I think we can actually get the 4.3 feet, a little bit, probably under four feet, but with some fine tuning of grading. But either way, if they are above four feet, we agree to provide the stability calculations for the wall. It's not, not an issue, not a problem. I think somebody had also asked about the fencing or any fall protection. So, I think it was covered, touched upon by the architect, is we do have dense landscaping on the top of these walls. Again, the walls I'm referring to in particular are outside one of the entrances. As you come out of this entrance inside the courtyard, there's dense landscaping proposed on the top of those walls. That's going to be the extent of the fall protection, idea being that those walls are not readily accessible to any students. However, with the dense landscaping, we further are, I'm going to say, discouraging any access on top of the walls.
How many walls are there, Brian, in the courtyard area?
In the courtyard, there, there's two main walls, yes, outside the one entrance. There are some other, I'm going to say, ancillary walls may be associated with steps, but yes, there's two main walls, one that extends, if you're coming out of the building, to the right, one to the left.
Okay.
And they vary in height. They range, they graduate, you know, I think, again, the highest is about 4.3 feet.
Okay.
There was another comment, while we're on grading, the last thing is about earthwork calculations. We didn't want to provide those until the design has settled, which it now has. We'll provide those calculations. It has to do with earthwork volumes and quantities coming out of there. That's, that's not a problem to provide those. Stormwater management, we have the same stormwater management system for the building addition and courtyard. There's actually an existing subsurface detention basin in the courtyard area that we're maintaining and not impacting as far as an impervious coverage standpoint. In fact, we're maintaining impervious, maybe slightly reducing it. In addition, we have a subsurface basin with a permeable pavement cover, whether that be an asphalt or a paver-type system. They'll provide the same function, and that is located outside the building in this paver walkway here. That's consistent with and meets all the green infrastructure requirements in accordance with the state rules. And yes, we did receive the comment earlier this week with regard to providing additional soil testing. Really, that soil testing is just to validate the design as far as permeability testing. Lighting, I think previously we had 18 ballard lights. There are some comments as far as addressing some, I'm going to say, lower levels. We have 29 ballard lights. All of them are complementary to the building architecture. There was a comment where we are a little bit low in some spots and a little bit high in some spots. That's mostly due to the nature of lighting we're proposing. These are ballards that are close to the ground, so you have some hotspots in certain locations. However, none of the lighting from the ballards escapes the sites or exceeds lighting levels of the property line. So, we do request a waiver from section 281-8.3E5. Again, it's 281-8.3E, as in Edward, five, to maintain the levels as we have them. One of the comments had to do with actually low levels at one of the entrances. We actually believe we do have sufficient lighting there. What we didn't model is any existing building-mounted lighting or ancillary lighting that comes from the building, because we don't have that information. We modeled what's proposed, which is the ballard lights. So, that's why we're coming up with a few smaller illumination levels. The reality is that, again, I think we have adequate lighting. I think that's the extent.
Thank you.
Of the modifications we made. And I think we covered the waivers.
I think we identified the waivers right.
Let me just go back, if I could.
Yes.
I just want to go back to the exceptions, so we're all clear. The first one that you cited was section 294-5D, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and the reason you need the exception is that you were not showing any existing drainage systems offsite, but you otherwise comply, is that right?
Correct.
And then, the next one you did was 281-8.3E5, and that are parameters for lighting, and you're saying you have less than the required lighting in certain areas, is that right?
Yes, and, and I think above as well in certain areas due to the hotspots, yes.
Okay, so, and where, are they all through the site, or is there?
No, just along the proposed walkway, really area, just right along the front part of the building.
But, but your testimony is that the, the exception is warranted because it's otherwise adequately lighted?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Yes, sorry, there's the point plot. Man, you can't really see the points, but this is where we analyze. And really, the points you want to focus on are along the walkways themselves relative to any nuisance lighting offsite. All of our lighting levels are, you know, at or below the standard at the property line. So, it's really, the comment had to do with on the walkways themselves, and we have adequate lighting.
So, and, and where you exceed the maximum permitted levels, those are in areas where there's not any spillage onto adjacent properties?
Correct, correct. That's well and board of the site. And again, the reason for that in some of those areas is because of the nature of these lights are low to the ground, and so you're getting these kind of hot spot at the, you know, point levels at the source of the light.
Okay. There was a comment here, I'm not sure I, paragraph 35 of the Boswell report from January 12th refers to request applicants summarize, provide any and all identification signage modifications proposed? Are there any?
Any identification signs?
No.
Okay. No changes? Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have for Mr. Perry. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Simon, do you have any questions?
Be no signage on a new building at all?
That's correct. The signage for the school is on the other side.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Just a couple of, couple of questions. So, in terms of the retaining wall, is the, the material, is, there will be a stone, stone wall, is that, as the renderings sort of suggest?
So, there're going to be concrete walls with, I believe they're going to have a veneer on them, correct? Yeah, stone veneer.
Stone veneer, that's, okay. So, that will be consistent with the rest of the campus, in other words?
Correct, that's the intent, yeah.
Okay. So, now that there won't be this additional road going to the back, do you foresee, given the fact that this new building will be there, and we know that there will not be an increase in the census of students and faculty and all of that, but, but do you anticipate that there would be increased or intensified, intensified usage of the existing parking lot in the back of the building?
I don't, no, I don't think so. I don't, because of that reason, right? There's not, they're not adding any students or faculty, yeah. I think it's going to operate the way it does.
Okay, all right. And, and currently, and you may or may not know the answer to this, so if you don't, it's, it's fine. Someone else perhaps can speak to that later. But from that parking lot to the front of the campus, how do people walk from that area to get to the, to get to the front of the campus?
I don't know the exact answer to that question. I'm sure somebody.
Mr. Douglas?
So, people walk typically, the people who park in this parking lot are typically faculty and students.
Yes.
So, they're not walking, no, sorry, just faculty?
Just faculty.
So, there, there are entrances on the backside of the building that the faculty prefer to use, because it's just much more convenient than walking from here around the front.
And so, since it's basically daytime use, in other words?
Yes.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking the question, Mr. Perry, is because we, as we talked about the lighting plan, I mean, I just happened to notice, looking, you know, going up onto the campus after it turned dark, and just sort of walking along the back area and trying to figure out, how do you get from the parking lot and get around to the front to be able to access activities at the gym, or in this new building, or whatever? There's not a lot of lighting back there. And, and so, I was wondering if, if there is any consideration about adding lighting in the back of the building from a safety perspective for those people that may utilize the parking area?
I would say it's something that the school probably would look into. And again, I think we just heard the access is through the back area, and that area you're referring to, correct? The back, the parking areas? Yeah, I mean, I guess they access the building from that point. I'm not sure what the lighting levels are at the doors, but I'm sure it's something that could be explored.
I'll also say that the facilities director just informed me that they installed new lighting on the backside of that building, just in the last month, building-mounted lighting.
All right, thank you. I'll reserve comment about that. Maybe I'll talk to the building person later.
If I could just add, because it was testified to at the last meeting, again, it's faculty parking, and most of the faculty have left the site by 3:30 or so, certainly before dark.
Yeah, I was thinking more in terms of later in the evening activities, like in the gym, or, you know, things that do. in the gym or, you know, things that do sort of create some traffic after hours. That's why I raised the question.
There's no good access. It's a long way from that parking lot all the way around the building to the gym, so people typically, what I've seen anyway, is people either park along the road or they park in the other lot.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Hi, no questions.
Mr. Caulfield?
No questions.
Mr. Church?
No questions.
Mr. Viera?
Yes, question on stormwater.
Yes.
Can you walk us again the impact of the underground stormwater storage facilities now versus the whole proposal? So, did you eliminate all of them?
I'm sorry, did you say eliminate?
You have three underground storage, stormwater.
So, now we have two. So, previously, we had underground stormwater systems, like tiered systems associated with the road. That all went away.
That went away.
Now, we're limited to an existing stormwater system that was in the courtyard that we're preserving and maintaining, and a new subsurface stormwater system, because there's quite frankly not space. So, it's subsurface, it's beneath the walk that you see in front of the building, and there's permeable pavers or pavement on top of that.
Yeah.
And that's what, and technically, we don't have to provide water quality because there's no vehicular surface, but that permeable pavement will allow the rainwater soaking to the ground as well as it conveyance to the adjacent drainage structures. So, whatever gets into that subsurface system, whatever we can up to the water quality storm will infiltrate into the ground. Whatever doesn't will continue to be throttled down and be discharged into the existing storm drainage system.
Okay. Yeah. And also, the proposed inlets that were outside of the proposed road, that also went away, right? There were...
Correct. Anything on the west side and north side of the building, correct?
That goes away. Right, thank you.
Mr. Moore?
What year was this building built? Do you know?
Yes, the building is, was actually built in, well, it depends on which wing of it you're talking about. The part we're adding on to the back of it was 1967.
1967. Have you done a hazardous materials test?
Yes. There are...
Asbestos?
Small amounts of asbestos in certain parts of the building.
The windows?
Not the windows, actually. And it should have been the roof, but the roof had been replaced, so they were, as I understand it, mitigated at that point. And so, there's, it's pipe insulation primarily, and a little bit of asbestos in one of the fume hoods.
So, you've taken into account proper remediation to any area that...
Absolutely. I mean, it's required by law, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you.
The parking spaces, are three spaces still being eliminated?
No, there's no elimination, so no elimination parking.
So, everything staying as is?
Correct. We're not impacting any parking.
Okay. The lighting, I'm not fully accepting your explanation as to why it's lower in some areas than the ordinance and higher in others. And I'm trying to figure out why in terms of where the lighting's being placed, and I'm not sure if some of this is, as you go around the round building, there are several places where it's well in excess of two, and I'm not sure what light fixtures are generating that. Is that new fixtures or that's what's existing?
So, the point plot, you're looking at the point plot on the lighting plan?
Yes.
That's all generated from the new fixtures that are being added, the ballard lights.
Okay. So, why on that entire area in front of the round building, there are multiple sites that are well over two, and I'm not sure why?
Well, some of that, again, has a function, it's a function of the style of light. So, we're dealing with ballards that are, you know, they're only 3.2 feet off the ground. And so, the source being close to the ground is creating hot spots.
Okay, but I'm not seeing any ballards over in that area.
Hmm. Actually, is that a...
I have a larger set of ideas.
And what we may be seeing is a overlapping throw from multiple lights. So, I mean, another 29 ballards throughout, and admittedly, the symbols are a little hard to see relative to the points themselves. Okay, you're referring to, you're referring to right in front of, in the lawn area, right? There's a couple of...
Right.
...point spots there. I mean, we'll evaluate and we'll, we can play around with the lighting on this. We can make, we can make some adjustments to it, and I think we'll be able to comply. I think someone's going to be involved getting some of the existing building lighting information, but I think we can make it...
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, what's there is there, and I'm, but I'm just not, and, you know, you know, going, you go from a 5.0 to a 0.3 to a 4.7, and that's under any circumstances, a little hard to explain.
Sure. Yeah, I think you're seeing contributions. I may have missed, but it looks like there's a pole light, an existing pole light, which you may have calculated. Either way, we'll make that a condition.
Yeah, I'm not interested in total conformity, but I, there just seems to be some gratuitous high levels that if it's triggered by new lighting, I would, you know, like that to be looked at and then shown to the board engineer.
Sure.
And then, just so, I'm not sure, the area in front of the addition, as, you know, most of that's below the minimum, and is there any exit to the building there, or that's...
Along the, I'll call it the western face now.
Yeah.
The door is on the south side, and then there's a door out into the courtyard from that addition.
Okay. Oh. Just so direction, I'm referring to the south side.
Well, sorry, sorry, the east side and the north side. The Lloyd, I'll call it Lloyd roadside.
Is where the exit is?
Correct.
Okay, so there's nothing on the south, the lawn south?
Yes, I apologize. Yes, the south side, plain left, yeah.
Okay. The other requirement, I'm not sure how to classify it. The conditional use requires a traffic study, which we can waive. I'm assuming you're requesting that we waive that based on the non-change in the number of pupils, even though we're approving a higher number of pupils from what we approved many decades ago.
That's correct. I was going to mention that in my concluding remarks, that that would be an additional waiver request.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the audience who have any questions for this witness? Do you have any other witnesses?
No other witnesses.
Okay. Are there any members of the audience who have any testimony or anything you want to say about the application? Mr. Chairman, do you want to...
Mr. Chairman, again, as I think we've addressed all the comments, to the extent we have not addressed any specific comments in the Boswell report, we will comply with those comments, as well as the comment, as I mentioned earlier, in the separate report relating to the stormwater management, the comment regarding performing percolation tests. So, we'll really come down to our two waivers. Since we've indicated the lighting plan will be revised to comply with the ordinance, and I assume that would be subject to the review and approval of Boswell Engineering. So, the only two waivers then would be the waiver from the one requirement, the steep slope ordinance that was identified in second subsection D5. And then, a second waiver request would be to, for the parking study that's required under the ordinance, which can be waived, and here we think it's appropriate to be waived because we're just adding to the size of this building, but as testified, there would be no increase in student enrollment, no anticipated increase in faculty or staff. So, the traffic and the amount in traffic volume, nothing changes from what exists today. The only other condition that I wanted to mention, or, and this is in the planning department report, comment about the applicant being required to pay a development fee pursuant to Montclair Code Section 202-43. I've discussed this with your board attorney, and based upon my review, the Montclair ordinance provides that there's exceptions from that requirement, based upon exceptions in the statewide non-residential development fee ordinance, and one of those exceptions is for buildings that are used, you know, for educational purposes and which are tax exempt. And this property has been tax exempt. We expect it will continue to be tax exempt. Obviously, it's being used for educational purposes. The only exception there is that if the property loses its tax exemption within three years of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the expanded building, that would be the only time a development fee would be required. That's not likely to be the case here, but otherwise, it would not be required. So, I think Mr. Sullivan and I talked about the board condition requiring compliance with the ordinance if applicable. And it would only be applicable, again, if the school lost its tax exempt status within three years of the data certificate of occupancy is issued for this expanded building. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. A couple of waivers in that, one comment on that, and otherwise, you know, we have a conforming application, which I would hope the board would approve this evening. Okay. We'll start discussion with Mr. McCullough.
Yeah, I'm generally in support of the application, including the waivers and the exemption from the, from the fee.
Ms. Harris?
I'm in support of the waivers being requested.
Mr. Caulfield?
Michael, quick question, two point, what is that, how did that work? Is that something that is usually done on properties? Has it ever done?
Yeah, we've carried that forth on non-residential development fees. The non-residential development's required to pay 2.5 percent fee. This is an exception, provided they stay tax exempt for a period of three years. The condition would read that the applicant's required payment of the non-residential development fee if applicable, and I think that covers this.
Okay. I'm in favor.
Mr. Church?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this application.
Mr. Viera?
I'm also in favor of the application.
Mr. Moore?
Generally, in favor of the application. Quick question. So, just back to the being tax exempt. So, private school but tax exempt property, would you explain that to me?
It's tax exempt, public or private.
Public or private. Okay, okay. I'm generally in favor of the application. I think that'll be a wonderful enhancement to the school and the community in which it resides in.
Mr. Harrison, do you want me to go through the conditions we imposed at the last meeting?
I would appreciate that, so...
So, when we previously granted preliminary site plan approval and modification of the prior condition with respect to the maximum number of students, we imposed a condition that the maximum number of students shall not exceed 475, and an annual report of the number of students shall be filed with, shall be filed on or before October 15th annually with the planning department. Second condition was the number of faculty and staff shall not exceed 100. A third condition was the portion of rooftop equipment that exceeds the height of the screen shall be painted the same color as the screen. Condition four was stormwater improvements shall adhere to the operations and maintenance manual. Condition five was requiring the applicant to comply with the outstanding items contained in the Boswell Engineering Review Memorandum, and that was, that's been superseded by the January 12, 2024 one. Any approval here today would include, we should also clearly state that it's conditional use approval and final site plan approval. We talked about the non-residential development fee as a condition, the applicant's bound by all representations made during the course of the public hearings, and the applicant shall be responsible for all inspection fees incurred under Montclair Code Section 202-27, as well as escrow fees incurred in connection with review of this matter. That's what I have.
Okay.
And I guess we would also insist on the lighting plan being revised, since the applicant's now stipulating that they're going to comply with the illumination levels in the ordinance.
Okay. Now, Mr. Simon?
I don't think I was eligible to vote for this one, but I believe you did.
You were, who was president of...
Mr. 27.
Yeah. You were not here?
And then, Mr. Moore wasn't here.
And Mr. Moore wasn't here.
In addition to those conditions, they shall adhere to the one condition on the Board Engineer's Stormwater Review Memo dated January 15, 2024. Conditions five through 13, 15, 16, 19, 22, 26, 27, 36 through 38 of the Board Engineer Review Memo dated January 12, '24. Do you want me to do those again slowly?
No, I got them.
Oh, good.
And you're being recorded also, so...
Yes, I know that, but listening to it isn't always, or watching it, the easiest thing. The condition one of the planner's report, the modified condition seven of the planner's report, and the lighting be modified and so that the walkways have the minimum lighting of 0.5, correct?
They're going to comply with both.
And that, I'm trying to do, yes, they should, yes, it's just, you know, they said they'll comply, so we'll make them comply. Okay. Any other comments from members of the board? So, it's, we should quote, so we're granting two waivers, granting conditional use approval and final site plan approval.
Correct.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
Well, I'll move all of that that you just stated.
Along with the conditions?
With the conditions.
Okay. All right. Do a roll call.
William Harrison?
Yes.
John McCullough?
Yes.
John Caulfield?
Yes.
Jay Church?
Yes.
Angela Harris?
Yes.
Sebastian Viera?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be it.
Thank you very much. Do we want to take a break or plow forward?
There's one more. There's, you can see the second page, there's one more. Good. Good to see you. Nice to see you, man. Sorry, that little. I'm still, you're such a great guy. The next application is that of Eight Washington Woshek LLC for property at Eight Washington Street, block 3,110, lot 17. This is an application for variance for a renovation in rear addition to an existing two-family home. The property is located in the R2 Two-Family Zone District. The applicant requests the following variances. Montclair Code Section 347-45B1, a variance of the required minimum front yard setback of 25 feet. The applicant proposes a front yard setback of 3.8 feet. Montclair Code Section 347-45B, variance for maximum building coverage of 41.4%, whereas 25% is the maximum permitted. Montclair Code Section 347-20B, variance for maximum impervious coverage of 56.3%, whereas 55% is the maximum permitted. My understanding is the application's been modified to eliminate that variance.
Correct.
Montclair Code Section 347-45C1, variance of the required minimum side yard setback of 1.6, of six feet required on one side and 4.9 feet is proposed. And for the second side, 10 feet is required, whereas 1.4 feet is proposed. Montclair Code Section 347-45C4, variance for the maximum width of dwelling, 65 feet, 65% is required and 75.4% is proposed. From Montclair Code Section 347-101, variance for the number of parking spaces, two parking spaces are required for each dwelling unit and waivers requested from the RSIS standard as zero parking spaces are provided. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
The taxes are paid and the notices are in order.
Mr. Vedder, you want to give your appearance and proceed?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Sullivan, members of the board. John Vedder entering my appearance on behalf of Eight Washington Woshek LLC. Summarize the variances here this evening. I think this is our fifth application on the street. It's a continuation of the renovation of this street. This is an existing two-family home that dates back probably to the turn of the century. We did confirm that they are two, two-bedroom units each on the first floor and the second floor. So we're replacing a two-family, albeit a larger two-family, but they, these, this is a two-bedroom, two-bedroom units on each floor. We're going to present an exhibit this evening showing that we were able to eliminate the impervious coverage, which I know is a recently enacted ordinance here, and get it to the, just below the 55% maximum permitted. And then essentially go through the other variances with the board. There was an earlier iteration of the plan, I don't know if it ever made it to the board, to attempt to get to parking in the back by way of a further easement. There's, there's a current easement between 10 and 12. It's under construction right now to, I'm sorry?
They're complete.
Yeah, they're complete, okay. So yeah, so there's an eas, so there, let's hope that the easement, there's an easement between the two properties to expand that, to try to get behind that property by a further cross-easement. Don't know if it's ever been done in this town. We ran into some complications at site back there, so that was pulled back. I'm not even sure if it ever was before you, but we did attempt to try to get some off-street parking and just were not able to. So the, the parking exists, there's a deficiency for the parking that exists and that will remain. So with that said, we have one witness, one witness this evening, Adam Lasota, is going to testify in the area of architecture.
All right, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in a matter pending before the board?
Yes.
State your name and address.
Adam Lasota, 1355 East Susquehanna Avenue in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
Okay, Mr. Lasota, if you would, give the board the benefit of your educational and professional experience.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the board. I am an architect. I got my license in 2018, first in the state of New Jersey. I completed a five-year program at NJIT for my B Arc in 2012 and currently am licensed in three states and all three are in good standing.
Okay, you offer him as an expert in the area of architecture. He has appeared before the board many times before.
We accept him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Adam.
Great. I'm gonna stand up here, so. Hello? Hello? There we go. All right. In front of us here are the drawings that were presented to the board, the multiple copies. So first is the visualization with kind of the proposed project in the middle. On the right-hand side is 10 Washington Street, which we appeared in front of the board a number of years ago that we got approved for. And the building on the left is the existing masonry, three-story multifamily structure. And then just to the left of that is towards the corner toward where Washington kind of dies into New Street, just to kind of help orient everyone on the board. So one of the topics that John had mentioned was that we had reduced the impervious coverage in order to meet the current requirements of the 55%. We were close in the previous application, but after some deliberation and some creative thinking, we came to a solution that actually does not impact the design much at all, but helped us get over that hump in order to get us at under 55%. So currently on the screen here, we have the previously kind of submitted application, which everyone on the board has had the opportunity to look at, but I'd like to kind of jump right into the latest one on the far one that we spoke about actually earlier today that I emailed over, just to show that how we were able to get over that hump to get us under that 55%.
Before you go any further, so let's mark that as Exhibit A1. And is there a sheet number on that or a title?
It's ZO2, which is similar to the other one, but it's noted as zoning submission revised to help differentiate it.
That's the title, got it, okay. And there's a date of today's date on it?
Correct.
Prepared by your office?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. So I'm going to zoom in here on the right and, oh, good, pinch to zoom works. Does this help kind of orient everybody? Can everyone get a look at it? So the footprint of the building has not changed. We are still going to revamp the existing footprint here in order to create that extra half-story. Also, the half-story does comply with all the zoning regulations, just as previously submitted. The front portion is an existing one-story. We are adding a second story onto that. No half-story on top of that, though. So just the two-and-a-half story is of the existing building. And of course, we're proposing that 12-foot addition at the rear of the building. The reason for this is that we are reorienting the building to, instead of having apartments one on top of another, we're orienting them so that the apartments are side by side, similar to what we have done at 10 and 12 Washington Street previously. So there's one unit forward facing towards the street side and then another unit facing the rear side, which I'll show you in the floor plans leading forward. So the main reason I wanted to go over this is that two of the main things that we did in order to meet that under 55% impervious coverage requirement is, one, we reduced the sidewalk along the entire length of the kind of northeastern side of the property from four feet to three and a half feet, even though six inches is not much, but when you're doing it along this long of a length, it really does add up. And on top of that, too, one of the other moves that we did was that we eliminated the kind of the large concrete raised pad that's at the front of the building that's a bit obtrusive. But in order to still make it up to the existing first floor level, we just added a couple more steps onto that front stairwell. So by, one, we're reducing the amount of coverage at the front, we're reducing coverage along the side, and actually gave us an opportunity to help improve the front elevation of the property as well. So just to help give everyone an explanation of how we were still able to get under that 55%, but still in keeping with the majority of the previous design in the application. So I'm going to go back to the other PDF, going back to the drawings that were submitted before, just to kind of walk you through quickly the design. Here we go. So you can see here how we're doing, there's a basement floor plan and the first floor plan. Again, we're separating it kind of right down the middle, going north and south. So we got the one, the unit one facing towards the street and unit two facing the rear, hence the need for that walkway so that the unit at the back has their own private entry. Open floor plans on the first floor, finished basements, again, with no bedrooms, no egress wells, so this way still in keeping with the zoning regulations. And then on second floor, two bedrooms and so on the, on the unit on the right, it's going to have a bedroom and an office space and then another bedroom and an office space. Again, the locations of these, they do have only one window and no closet spaces, so that way they're strictly home offices and no crammy people in there just for the sake of it. They will be, they're designed as two-bedroom units, but especially nowadays, even though thankfully COVID is over, the need for the home office, especially nowadays, has become almost a standard throughout, throughout any new homes or renovations that I've had the privilege to be able to work on and design. You know, everyone talks about open concept. Now, the big thing is not only open concept, but everyone needs a home office because plenty of people are still working remotely and flexibly. And then lastly, on the attic space, it is still a half-story, still keeping within the minimum requirements, both in size of the dormers on both sides and in keeping with the square footage to be considered a half-story, which will house the third, which will house the second bedroom, kind of the second bedroom suite. The suite being, you know, bedroom, walk-in closet and bathroom for each unit. Sorry about that, a little sensitive, there we go. So on the left here is a front elevation. Again, we're doing a facade articulation facing forward, similar to what we've done at 10 and 12, kind of keeping in character what we previously designed. You can see here how there, there is a little bit of, yeah, there is a step back here on the half-story with a window there, still keeping within the gable look to still have that same character as 10 and 12 Washington Street. Here you're seeing on the right-hand side a number of windows along that elevation in order to kind of bring in natural light, also because on the other side, there's an existing small setback. And on those two side, on that side elevation, you can see here unfortunately, there's no windows. One, because, because it's so close to the property line and because of building codes, it's really, even if we were to put a window there, no natural light would go there because you've only got about a foot and a half from the property line and the building next door is really close to the property line as well. So there really was no benefit to even trying to put windows on that side. So one of the reasons why, because of the existing site, we were still able to design a great two units so that every room has a window, at least every room that needs a window, right? I think the only areas that don't have any windows here are these two areas where the stairs are and other small support spaces. So again, even though it's tough and challenging, which I think with these really tight lots in this area, it, they're all really challenging, but we still strive to design kind of through the issues and through the problems. So that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Just a question for you with respect. It was a question about the fencing that we didn't necessarily understand. I think we can accommodate the, the request, just to make sure we understand it, about four and a half feet versus six?
That's a part of the planning consideration?
Yes.
Yes.
If the fence should be reduced to 4.5 feet and how you can install it in front of the extreme rear corner of the property?
Yeah.
And you'll conform to that or you have?
Well, we, we, we were asking what was?
We thought the code was six. Is it, it is four and a half?
We, we designed the fences along the sides and the rear yards to be six and the only fence that is this forward, this front-facing fence is four feet with a, with a three-foot gate.
The answer is yes, we will comply. We just didn't realize that that was the requirement.
Yeah, it's usually six feet at the, behind the building. Everything, yes, that would all be six feet.
So from this point of the, the far corner all the way to the front?
From the rear corner to the street is four and a half feet.
Yes, that's, that's fine.
That's fine, then we will.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll make sure to comply.
So that would eliminate that variance as well. Okay, with that said, I have no further questions of Mr. Lasota.
Mr. Simon, do you have any questions?
You said you would reduce the width of the sidewalk for four feet, which is what shown here, it's two and a half.
Correct.
So this is the, as far as the building, the side of the building's no windows, that's what we're going to do.
Pretty close, yes.
There's no lights proposed, otherwise it would be very dark down.
Correct.
Does Bill Lang propose that all for that side?
No, we, we didn't propose any lights on that side. We only proposed lights on the sidewalk side.
Do you have any lights on the missing building? That would be better for that dark spot.
I didn't see any from the street, but I can't say to further pass whatever's viewable from the street. So it would be considered, as you, as you said, Mr. Simon, a dark alley, yes.
So would you be opposed to putting some lighting so it's not, at least at the front of it, so that it's not?
We can propose lighting, but because of the proximity to the property line, we can have light spillage issues. So any light that goes on there is going to be, you know, spilling onto the neighbor next door, but I understand your concern from, from a security standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
Correct.
This is a lot of really hard stuff. Okay, and you have the thing on your, there's a typo on your attic plan, it says basement, it says bathroom as opposed to the bedroom.
Oh, apologies.
Zero five, this is primary bathroom, that's a pretty big bathroom. On the left side, that just says the, here.
On the attic plan?
Yeah. Proposed attic plan.
Mm-hmm.
The huge space says primary bathroom.
Oh, that should say primary bedroom. Apologies, the one in the back one. Yeah, that's why we like to show furniture, just in case the spell check didn't correct. The furniture kind of makes it fairly obvious, but thank you so much.
Okay.
Mr. McCullough?
So just to get some, some clarification, a few things. So again, sort of going back to the alley itself, the alley is the, is there a boundary line right down the middle of that alley?
Correct.
Okay, has there been any, any conversation about creating any kind of obstruction for people going through, going into that alley area or like a little fence or something like that?
We didn't propose a fence, but I don't think it would be out of the question to propose a fence. At the same time, as you were mentioning, that area is kind of right here between the buildings. So we have about a foot and a half there, probably less than a foot and a half, and the neighbor's next door's property probably has just as much, if not a little bit more.
Right.
So we would need cooperation with the neighbor. If we, I, I don't think, I don't think our client would be opposed to.
I think we can fit it. I think it's a good recommendation.
I agree.
Maybe like an aluminum style, if that's the board's, like a four-and-a-half-foot aluminum-style fence there, that would be attractive and then close off that alley area and we could have a motion detector there as well.
Yeah, something that would, would complement both buildings if possible.
Correct. No, I, I agree. We would, we would strive to try to get, you know, you know, reach out to the owners of that property and try to come to an agreement.
Yeah, because I mean, I agree with my colleague, it's, it's pretty dark and sort of strange to walk through there. And I didn't notice any lighting on, on the other building either.
Neither did I.
So then on the northeast side, so you, and your, your drawing, your, your rendering sort of had a green, green strip between the edge of your walkway and I guess the walkway for number 10, is that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so the green area belongs to?
It belongs to our side.
Yeah, so it is on your side?
Yes.
Okay.
There, there is a walkway against 10 here and they also have a little bit of a green strip there.
Okay, it was a little hard, I mean, I was walking around there and of course it's all covered by snow, so I couldn't tell what, you know. And then, so what about the, the lighting on that side, on the northeast side? Can you go over that again, please?
Yes, so similar to what we did at 10 and 12 Washington Street, along those walkways, we do have a series of downlight sconces across the entire facade. So this way, there will never be a point where the, you know, the owner or the renter of the, the back unit will ever feel like they're going down a dark alley. You know, that, this area between the two homes is going to be, you know, along this wall, there are going to be a bunch of downward-facing sconces.
They're shown on your elevation.
And they are shown in the elevation, yes. And then on top of that, along 10, they also have the same thing. And then on top of that, along 10, they also have the same thing. So it will be well lit.
Okay. And then, so now the basement windows, what's the proposal for those windows?
The proposal is just for small, you know, two foot eight by one and a half feet tall for just a finished basement. Again, there's an ordinance in the Montclair zoning that states that no bedrooms are allowed in a basement, especially when a basement is sunk down more than four feet from grade, which this one they clearly are. So we do not want to make any inclination for there to be a bedroom down there. It is simply a finished basement for either recreation or additional living room or hangout space. And we just want to keep it as that.
And that will be clear glass or what do you...
Yes, it would just be glass. It would either be an awning or a sliding window.
Okay. And right now, I think there is, is there some kind of like a railing in front of those windows or something like that?
A what?
Like a railing or something? There's some kind of, is there anything on those windows?
Are there bars on the existing?
Maybe, something like that.
I don't recall, but in the proposed design, there will not be.
There will not be?
No, no. No, no security rails or bars or anything like that, no.
Okay, all right.
I agree. The windows are small because of how sunken in the basement is. We don't want to, we don't want to block off any natural light. What little can come through those smaller windows.
Okay. Are you aware of any problems of water in that area for the basement?
No, I haven't heard of any issues with some of the...
It is a dry basement?
Yes. And all the basins will have a French drain and a sump pump, which is something that we do as standard.
That's what's going on in number 10 and number 12, similar?
Correct. They both have sump pumps. And then they're split similarly with unit front and back, and each basement has its own sump pump. So again, they're two completely separate units, and we're employing the same strategy here for A Washington.
Okay. Can you, can you go over again what you were saying, because I didn't quite follow? In terms of the parking situation, you were describing sort of an unusual arrangement that you were trying to work out with.
John, yeah, John Vetter had mentioned that we were, 10 and 12 Washington Street has a four-car parking lot that's shared between the two.
Yes.
And they have a shared driveway between the two. We had thought to maybe tee off that and provide two parking spaces in the rear. But again, that was a kind of a wild idea.
Okay.
That didn't work out.
So the tenants of these buildings will have to find street parking, is what you're...
Which they currently, currently it is a two-family with each unit being two bedrooms. And currently it's street parking and it will continue to be street parking.
And the apartments are going to be back-to-back? One-facing entrances is in the rear and the other one has the entrance into the front? Or are they side-by-side?
Just as you explained the first, the first way, one faces the street and one faces the rear yard. And the demising wall is, you know, right in between.
So one unit is larger than the other?
Yes, slightly.
And the additional footage in the second one, that appears where, in the bedrooms or in the...
Correct. So the addition, the 12-foot addition in the back is, houses, you know, the bedroom, the office, and gives us the square footage needed on the first floor to give a similar open concept, you know, living, dining, kitchen space, similar to what we were able to, oh, similar to what we were able to fit in the front-facing unit.
Okay.
Oh, it locked me up.
It's AI.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
I guess I'm finished. So, yeah, thank you.
I would be curious to know if the board happens to have or other, any thoughts on that? Extending a, I know it's not before you this evening, but while we're here, extending another easement, just not beyond two properties, but now taking it to a third as there may be other, you know, we saw some benefits by trying to get parking, but we also saw some detriments by now crossing over a third into a third property.
I wouldn't have an inherent problem. I think a lot of legal questions about the practicalities of doing it. But if that can be resolved, you know, I would not automatically disfavor something that would provide off-street parking that couldn't otherwise be provided.
We did have a meeting with Janice actually showing that proposal, that wild idea. But she said, well, I'm not going to say what she said. I think she was favorable, but, you know, she's not here to speak for herself, but we tried.
Similar commentary.
So do we know that if the street allows overnight parking, is there permit parking on Washington Street for these cars?
I'm not 100% sure. I know that New Street is permit parking. I'm not sure if that same street parking regulation is set into Washington Street.
Yeah, would it be automatic? Okay. Okay. Can you go to your elevation, your front elevation?
So here's the front and the side elevation, that northeast elevation facing the walkway.
So why is the back unit higher?
The back unit is higher because it's wider. So once you widen it and to keep the same roof angles, it has to go up in order to make the framing work. So as you can see, the width here is smaller than the width here. But in order to keep the same roof angle, that the roof on this half has to extend a little bit further in order to keep the same roof angle.
Can you go back to the...
Sure. And you could see it, oop, let's, oop, sorry, sorry, this thing is very touchy. So here, this is actually a good example. It's kind of hard to see with, let me zoom in here to help explain it. There we go. So you can see, I'm going to get a little closer. So you can see how the front width and then in that shadow line, there's the back width. So the main roof line is here. And in order to make that extra width, that same roof line has to keep going a little bit in order to make that framing work correctly. So that way, the roof along this elevation, which is that elevation here, is on one plane.
But isn't that kind of the similar condition of the existing building, right? The back is a little bit wider?
Correct.
But you don't have that same difference in the...
No, because it has a flat roof. The rear existing portion has a more of like a flatter roof in the back. But it's front pitch at the front, again, it's a, it was an old construction. It was kind of, I guess, plopped on to the back with not much thought to it.
Okay. How is mail handled in these types of buildings when you have the two, one unit in the back and one in the front?
That's a good question. My solution to that would be that one mailbox would be at the door here and one would be on the side, you know, towards the walkway to the second unit. Yeah, so at 10 and 12 Washington Street, that's, yeah, we did something similar where, I'm going to go back to the site plan to help explain it. The entrance here, you would have the mailbox at the base of the steps at the front for unit A or unit one. And for unit B, just before the gate here on the side, that's where we put the other mailbox. So that way, as the back tenant would be walking towards their, you know, walking towards the backyard into their unit, they'd have the mailbox to the left against the building right before they go through the gate.
Okay, thank you.
Is that roof going to be prefabbed?
No, no, it's going to be traditionally wood-framed.
Just a quick question. Ms. Dolgan used to be on this application. Is she still a part of this project?
No.
All right, so then, can you go to like your first page that you have there? Okay, now you did design the one to the right, which is number 10, correct?
Correct.
Quick question. On the planner's report, figure three, that building on the right doesn't have the brick. It's more of...
It's a siding, yeah.
It's a siding. So it was changed over the time?
It was changed during the course of construction.
Okay. Because there's been applications that came and, you know, we're supposed to be in the site plan. It's supposed to be what's built there, but it looks like it was changed during construction.
Correct.
So you're going to build that brick facade like that on that side? And that's going to hold to that or is it going to be the prefab of what's existing of what's there to the right right now?
Well, the, I was, especially during the design of 10 and 12, we wanted to give that brick facade in matching the character of the street, especially with the masonry buildings towards the corner around New Street. And I want to keep that same character with this little strip of brick here to kind of help bridge that transition.
I think the commissioner's point is he wants the applicant to hold their feet to the fire that they will do that. And the answer is we, if the board sees fit to approve the application, put that in the resolution and we'll make sure that it...
Yeah, I agree, but it changes somewhat for me, like, I don't know. Now, instead of like a whole line of brick there, it's going to be, I mean, that's, 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 that might be a minor fact. I can get to that later. I think my bigger point is, if we look at the planner's report, I don't know if you have a copy of it, figure two, the aerial report. I was on this board when the property to the right was developed. I think it was a father, family builders that made that type of building with the driveway down the middle. And then what we're starting to see now is a lot of these buildings being built in this area. The zone, the thing that kicks the zone in here is that it's, you know, a frontage, R2 of a 60-foot frontage. There's not a single house in this entire area that has 60-foot frontage. I think a study needs to be done in this area. I mean, to continue more of these houses in this area, I think it would be detrimental. So that's where I fit in this. Thank you.
Mr. Church? I would just concur with my colleague's remarks and support a look at what we could do to kind of break up this. I was on the board when the first two came up and which everything else seems to be modeled on. It's getting to be very repetitious now throughout that whole area. And I would just like to state that I think something should be, we should look at something to see how we can break it up some way. It's getting too similar. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Question about the separation between the two units. What does that look like? There's acoustics to avoid?
Oh, you're talking about the separation between the two units?
The wall, yeah.
Yeah, that is a two-hour rated construction. So it's actually a shaft wall that is between the two. Typically, you only need about a one-hour rating, but it's frankly, in my opinion, chintzy. Or it's not sufficient in order to provide a proper separation between the two units. So this system, which we employed in 10 and 12 Washington Street, has a thick shaft gypsum board. So it's two really thick pieces of gypsum also, and they're connected by a series of metal channels that not only are great acoustically separated, but they're also incredibly great with a fire separation as well. And then there's framing in front of that and another layer of gypsum board for the finish. So you've got, you know, two half-inch layers of gypsum board and another two layers of shaft insulation gypsum board between the two units. So sound completely fairly well mitigated. And of course, fire separation, as per needed by code, absolutely meets that standard.
And that will be throughout all the levels?
Correct. And per code, we need to make sure to maintain that fire separation between the two units from the top of the foundation all the way to the underside of the roofing.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Moore? Would you provide a count of the existing number of bedrooms on the property?
So currently, there are two, two-bedroom units.
Would that change any, okay. Do you think that will change anything in helping to calculate, I don't know, the parking demand? Any changes in the parking demand? What you have, no?
The existing are, granted, they're tiny two-bedroom units. We're just making them up to kind of today's standards in terms of living and in terms of square footage. So that, one of the reasons why we designed it in this way is because we couldn't get the extra parking. So we didn't want to try to cram two, three-bedroom units. We wanted to stick to two bedrooms, which it currently is, just, as I said, bring them up to modern size standards.
So within planning considerations, it says if the home offices are converted into bedrooms, then a parking variance would be required?
Mm-hmm.
Is that happening?
No, no, absolutely not. With both bedrooms, I could bring up the floor plan. We designed them in a way so that they wouldn't be. Because albeit we tried to maximize the square footage, again, these, you know, these aren't luxurious bedrooms. Within the unit on the, the unit facing the rear, there's a home office and a small, thin linen closet. You can't extend that linen closet anymore or else it's going to get in the way of the staircase and make it illegal. And then the other home office, it's flanked by a bathroom and a laundry room. You can't make those any smaller. You can't carve areas out of that either. So I think strategically, we designed these rooms in a way to make sure that no one does try to cram in closets or try to cram in people in there to be additional bedrooms.
Would you have, would there be an issue in having that be a stipulation? Should we approve the application that home offices stay as such?
That would be fine, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, the market would be like a two-bedroom plus den or two-bedroom plus office. I mean, especially with the proximity to the train station and with some of the other projects that, you know, we've been happy to have done, a lot of transient people from New York City. And a lot of times, they like to have that one or two days' work from home during the week so that home office becomes priceless.
To, just not relevant to our decision. For, do you know what the post office address is at 10 and 12? Is it 10A, 10B? Just a, they're separate mailboxes.
They are separate mailboxes. I don't know if, was it unit A, B or unit 12?
There has to be a way to distinguish them.
It's unit A, unit B. A face to the street, B is at the back.
Yes. The, um, the building, I assume the basement's existing and then you're expanding it out to the back, is that correct?
Correct.
When 10 was, I, there ended up being structural problems that required the building to be demolished. And when they dug out the foundation, there was frequently standing water in the basement. So I'm glad you're doing sump pumps because I think it's probably going to be necessary with the deep basement. But where do the sump pumps discharge?
That's a good question. I'm not, do they just, I'm... Oh, it goes out into the, the, into the, no, into the rear landscaping.
Okay, so that's easy for the rear unit. How is that done for the front unit?
There's also a drywall system for the both properties too. So if it doesn't, if it doesn't dump right into the, kind of the landscaping in the green area at the back, it would then tie into the, to the drywall system.
My suspicion is the drywall system would be very quickly overwhelmed just judging by watching my sump pumps pumping the past couple of weeks and the amount of water coming out of them and the frequency with which. And I suspect this situation here will be similar.
And where on the site would the drywells be?
We would include the drywells. We do have, also for some reason, I don't know why the... We would actually discharge them into, we would put a drywall system right in this rear yard where it's shown as just grass.
And then you would pipe the sump pump from the front of, yeah, how would you, how would the water from the...
The sump pump would be positioned as far in the back as possible in that, in that unit A, as Chairman Sir Harris was saying. And it, we'd be able to pump it right to the drywall system. You'd be surprised how much horsepower those little pumps have and how much they can actually push.
But you would do that through unit B?
It would be underground or it would be underground outside. Thankfully too, once you get below three feet and below the frost line, you won't have any freezing issues.
These have all been designed by David Fantine. He's not here this evening, who's been the site engineer on 11 and 13, 10 and 12, and this one as well. And, you know, would review that with the board's engineer as well, to his satisfaction, his or her satisfaction.
I have more, just... I have more, just bear with me a second so I remember to do a condition. The, on, I, on ten and one other building we, that was done, it was discovered midpoint that the building was not, had to be demolished, could not be added on to. Have you done a thorough structural examination of the building?
On this one?
Yes.
The basement is in good condition from my survey that I had done about a year ago. And the floor joints of that, of the, between the basement and the first floor are still in good condition. We plan on reusing them. The walls, unfortunately, we won't know until we pull the plaster and lath or sheet, or sheet rock that's on the interior to really expose everything.
And my understanding of your responses to Ms. Harris's questions, the, your, the existing roof over the rear portion of the building will be removed and a new roof installed? Is that correct?
Correct. And on top of that, all of the roofs will be replaced completely. Because the, the older roofs are frankly undersized and they do not have the modern attachments for wind resistance that is required by code. So in that regards, for that reason and for the other reason that we are raising the roof line. Hence why we're reframing the entire roof.
Okay, and where you're excavating the basement next to the existing basement, what becomes of that existing basement wall? I assume it stays because it's structural.
The existing basement wall at the rear?
Yes.
It will be removed.
And you'll do something to shore up the house well?
Correct. We did that actually on twenty-three New Street. Where we did, we proposed a re-erdition. They shored up the existing while they were doing the foundation work. And it was successful.
Let, let me do the concern and to explain the condition that be imposed. My concern is the one, little more than one foot setback to the easterly side property line. I understand that's an existing condition and you're continuing. And I'm not having an overwhelming problem with that because to jog it in a couple, you know, a foot and a half to do our normal three feet wouldn't, okay. But if it ends up that the building needs to be demolished, then I don't want to have the variance continue to let you continue to have the one-plus feet setback to that property line. I, so just so you understand when you hear the condition that you're going to come and visit us again if you discover you're tearing the building down.
At that point, it would no longer be an expansion of the non-conforming. We'd be seeking new relief.
Understood.
The stormwater from the roof, again, same question. I understand how you can deal with it easily from the rear building particularly. But how are you getting this, how are you handling the stormwater from the roof from the front part of the building?
All the roofs slope to the sides.
Yes, and that's my issue.
Oh, so the, the gutters would then connect and be able to transfer all of that to the stormwater management system.
They connect underground.
Either they would have to be sloped accordingly to slope all the way towards the back or the downspouts, if they would need to be positioned along that, along those two facade lines, they would tie underground.
Okay, and I guess, and my issue there is from the front of the house going back to the rear underground, you're going to need the slope so the water will flow. And assuming the high water table, I'm not sure you're, you know, that you're not discharging at a point in the drywall that's not going to have water during a storm event, which seems to be something we're getting every other day. And, you know, I, you know, you know, I, I mean, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to require that all of that sump pump, the stormwater from the house, be shown to the board's engineer to review, to verify that in fact it works and will not adversely affect the properties on either side.
I'll make sure that, when I speak with Mr. David Fantine, the engineer, I'll make sure to relay that.
It may require a larger drywall.
It may. And if it has to, then that's what will be installed.
I think it may require more than one drywall. It might be, just because there's a limit to how deep it's going to go without being below, even not just the seasonal high water table, just the flow of the water table.
Sure. Thankfully, we don't have the rear parking in the back, so we do have quite a bit of area to fit if we need to.
Side benefit of the parking.
Side benefit, yes.
Any other questions from members of the board?
Just, just one question. For number ten and number twelve, they're also set up as A, B units, right?
Correct.
Okay, so do both of those properties also have this long walkway to get to B?
Correct.
And there's no driveway?
Well, ten and, ten and twelve, they have the driveway down the middle.
In the middle of those two.
Between the two, correct.
Okay.
And then the walkways are on the outsides.
Right, we required that so people didn't have to walk down the driveway.
So in this particular case, for number eight, there will only be this walkway?
Correct.
All right. So I'm thinking about the issue of snow removal or ice on that walkway. Have you considered a possibility of maybe a heated walkway or something like that? So because the, the party living in B would be responsible, I mean, that's the only, the only egress is that walkway.
Correct.
Correct, right?
Correct.
You know, so in the case of an ice storm, something like that, like we had the other day. I mean, have you considered that as a possibility? Something that would make this situation a little bit easier than, than it would be if it's, if it's a?
Frankly, no, we have not. To install such a system, I will say that it's cost prohibitive for the user. Even though the installation of it, you know, I'm not saying that that's not an economical issue. Running a system like that is actually quite expensive. And I think once the tenant uses it once and sees the electric bill, they will probably never use it again.
And the, the properties are professionally managed. The applicant that's here this evening has properties, you know, in ownership with the prior applicant and on his own as well in this neighborhood. And they have contracts with snow removal companies.
So there will be someone who will come along and clear that path? Because it's a long path.
It is, sure.
Okay.
Mr. Church. Yeah, um, what was I going to ask? Are these units for sale or are they rentals?
Uh, I believe these are rentals.
Rentals.
Rentals, okay. And is that rental amount within a certain range? Or is it going to be left to how much it costs to put the building together?
Yeah, I think it would just be what the market bears. At the time, the Realtor, at the time when it's ready, will set a price.
Because I, I bring that up because we approved one several months ago over on Weller Street. And it was advertised, it was rented. The unit was rented from that building at $5,000 a month. That doesn't seem to fit in with the neighborhood and the people that live there that would benefit from these revised buildings and be able to move into them and not leave their neighborhood. It seems like it jumped awful high. I'm just wondering if that could occur with the renovation of this building?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, the question is, how high do you think the rent will have to go to justify the renovation?
Yeah, Ms. Lissoto will not be qualified to answer the question. She's not a licensed Realtor.
Okay, all right, all right.
But I think it would ju, just answer the question. I think it would be what the market bears. So this is not a, you know, a co or affordable housing unit. That would be restricted or de-restricted. So I think it would just be what the, what the, I recognize your concern, but I think in this case, this unit, both units would be market.
Market value, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions, members of the board? Hey, just for the formality, are there any members of the audience who either have questions, statements, comments, anything whatsoever you want to say about the application? Okay, anything further?
No, no further witnesses, no further questions of this witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board, thank you.
Okay, do you want to sum up or?
Yeah, it's getting late. You've been here for a while. You know, in summary, we've, you know, we have looked at this lot several ways. It's been a long time that we've been at it in speaking with, with Janice and looking at, you know, ways to make enhancements. Appreciate all your comments that, that we received. And we've been able to eliminate two of the variances. And I recognize the concerns of the commissioners, Mr. Caulfield and Mr. Church. And I think if that's something that the, the board wants to take back to the mayor and council to look at these back-to-back units. You know, we think from a, from a market standpoint, they're very desirable. They work very well. There's not a lot of conflict like there are in the old traditional two families with the up and down and the noise. They, they have an opportunity for someone who is not able to afford something potentially to buy in the neighborhood, but to rent in this neighborhood and have something that feels like their own home with an upstairs and a downstairs. So it does, it does fill the need, but I recognize your concern. We've tried very hard to, you know, make improvements and enhancements. This case, that was not too difficult. The property is clearly in need of being renovated. I think it, it fits very nicely into the neighborhood now with a lot of the changes that have been made. And we hope the board sees fit to approve the application. And as always, we thank the professionals and we thank you all for your time.
Let's start discussion with Ms. Harris.
I, I, I'm in favor of the application. And I know, I know Mr. Harrison's going to impose conditions. I would say typically what's represented in your application should be what's built. And if there are changes made, even if they're cosmetic, they should come back to the board. So the unit next door, what was approved is not what was built. So let's make sure that if you do decide to make changes down the road with this one, you do come again, come before the board again. And you mentioned that, you know, people who can't afford to buy in Montclair can rent one of these. The unit on, one of the units on Willow Dale went for $6,100 a month, which I would say is more than a mortgage, even in Montclair. So I understand what Mr. Church, Mr. Church's concern that these units will not be affordable to the people that you're displacing here. And that is a concern for us as community members in Montclair, so.
Mr. Caulfield.
Couple of things. I, I've been in these houses. I mean, they're, they're actually for younger people because there's a lot of stairs. You're walking up and down the stairs. It's not necessarily for older people. You know, as I, as I look at the old house, that was, you know, what was once there, you know, I mean, maybe, maybe the affordability factor in Montclair has changed. You know, like maybe that house that was built in, I don't know, whatever it was, fit the, fit Montclair because it was affordable. And that maybe we don't really have affordability too much anymore in Montclair with tax structures and stuff like that. And that, you know, what we're getting is, is getting less. My only concern is, is that, is that we are going, you know, we're seeing, you know, we're seeing not just one of these, we're seeing four of these, five of these. I'm counting off of, over these years. So we're going to start seeing a lot of these things. And maybe, maybe Montclair is changing. Maybe the affordability of the 1960s of having, you know, not the biggest house, but being able to live in this community, go to the schools and be part of the community. Maybe that's not this community anymore. Thank you.
Mr. Church. Yeah, I'm just, want to comment and go on the record as saying that I think that we're genderfying that area by these prices. I understand it costs a lot to build. I understand it costs a lot to renovate. But it also costs a lot when we lose residents that have been in the community for years and give our community, generally speaking, a character. And to displace them is, what could happen, they could be displaced, I think is a shame. I have that comment. I, I, I am generally in favor of it because I see nothing else coming up at the ti, at this time until something does come up where it's affordable. And I appreciate John's comments, the town's getting expensive. But it's the expense, the bigger expenses, moving people out of their neighborhoods because they can't afford to live there anymore. That's a bigger expense to us. I'd be in favor of it. Mr. Vera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I share the same concerns than my colleagues. I think it's basically we're creating a new neighborhood in, in, in the community. However, I think that's a higher discussion, maybe for elected officials. But on the merits of this application, I think I'm, I'm in favor. I'll vote in favor.
Mr. Moore.
I share the same sentiments as my colleagues. Montclair is a unique community in which, you know, our fabric is very holistic. It's not one-way. And so it is very important that we keep in mind not only our high prices, but also our affordability and that quality doesn't, it's not, it doesn't necessarily dictate the amount of rents. And so I am generally in favor of the application, looking at this as a one-off. But once again, right, it may be a higher or a larger conversation in making sure that we are staying in alignment with the community in which we're looking to make an improvement. Because generally, this particular street has been more so on the affordable side. And we don't necessarily want to displace our, no, we don't want to displace our residents. We are the community, right? And that's why we're here. It is an enhancement. And so that's why I am for it. But I certainly wanted to make sure that, I say that in the same breath, you know? But it is a beautiful enhancement to the, to the community. So I'm in favor.
Mr. Sivan.
I'm generally in favor. My, my only concern is that dark alley. I think that's a serious safety concern. And I think there should be something done to address it, whether through motion lights or some activity. Because if I'm correct, that goes all the way to the back of the house, right? I, that would be my only concern. But otherwise, I'm in favor.
Mr. McCullough.
So I, I see, I see, you know, the paradigm between the, the building number six, I guess is the concrete building next, next to it? Yeah, and number eight. And sort of the, the paradigm is that number six has probably been standing for over 100 years. Clearly is reflective of the history and character and culture of the community. And the number eight shares that in part because the original building, I don't know when it was built. Do you know when it was built?
Oh, no.
Okay. So in, in part, it is reflective of that. But, you know, what you're, what you're proposing, which is, which certainly would be a beautiful addition to, to the neighborhood. I'm not, I'm not questioning the design of, of what is being proposed. But, but it, it does sort of contribute to a concern that I've had for some time now. Because as a couple of my colleagues have mentioned, there are several of these buildings. And I haven't followed. And I haven't followed sort of the rental costs of these, of these buildings. I've been more concerned about the quality of the construction, the longevity that is represented in the materials that are utilized to, to build them in comparison to the historical character of the community. And I find a lot that is wanting personally. And while I'm not a lifelong resident of, of Montclair, I've been here long enough, I think, to appreciate the historical character of this community and believe that it is, it really is imperative for us to, to find ways to, to try to maintain that moving forward. It doesn't mean that new construction shouldn't happen. It just means that when we're looking at, how do we update our neighborhoods, that we take that into consideration. This neighborhood is beginning to me to feel like an exclusive neighborhood. And when I hear some of my colleagues talk about the cost of rent, that adds to that concern. And I presumably, the homeowners or the property owners are, are present and have heard the same concern, but it doesn't change the fact that there is a market and you charge what you believe the market can bear. But that still can have both a positive or a negative impact, again, in terms of the long-term interests of the community. So I, I say all that to, to indicate that, I guess from my, from my vantage point, even though, even though the design, I think, is, is, is quite beautiful and it's very much in character with, with what has already been constructed in this neighborhood, I, I, I think I'm, I think I'm leaning towards saying no, simply because I think at some point we need to take a pause and we need to, we need to be sure how we want to move forward as a community. And so if we keep saying yes, looking at everything on the, on the merits of the individual proposal, then we never get to that point in which we allow ourselves to be able to look more holistically. Do we want this whole neighborhood ultimately to have this design? It's just, it's just a question. And we, it may be that we do, but it also may be that we don't. And, and I don't know how we get there other than to sort of take that moment in which we allow ourselves a space to figure that out. That may not be the zoning board's responsibility, but it may be an opportunity for the zoning board to kick it back to those who do have the responsibility to wrestle with that question. And maybe even though my vote might be a minority and, and this will be approved, perhaps it still might be enough to force that question. And I'm looking at the chairman, but, but to force the question or the query to those who have the responsibility to sort of look at these things and sort of answer those kind of questions. So I'm, I think I'm a no.
Okay. First, Hussein, if you could add to our list of recommendations, doing something with the new mission, you know, Maple Wheeler. I don't know what the recommendation is, but add that as a topic, and I think we should probably have a discussion as to that. Let me, let me do, do the philosophical discussion first and then deal with the application. But to some extent, I want the applicant to hear, when the train station was established at Bay Street, I raised to governing, then governing body members the fact that, one, there was a lot of existing substandard housing in this neighborhood, and two, that inevitably what was going to happen was that developers were going to come into the neighborhood, buy properties relatively cheaply. And I was actually concerned something far worse than what is happening was going to happen in terms of wholesale demolition of existing housing. But, you know, and the train station, you know, and the houses, I have a tax map from 1890. All these houses existed back then and, you know, it was built as a working-class neighborhood. Different, you know, situation in terms of, you know, we actually had industry in Montclair in the area at that point. But it is, you know, you know, nothing we can do. It's a two-family zone, it's an existing two-family, it's staying a two-family. You know, I, you know, one of the things I'm concerned, you know, one approach is, you know, don't really like these narrow lots and the lots are supposed to be wider, but you require that, deny those variances, then you get bigger houses, bigger lots and more expensive housing. I, you know, I'm, you know, I'm struggling with a solution. I think there are things that the governing body could have done, could still do, whether using the Affordable Housing Trust Fund money, they have government programs to facilitate existing property owners to renovate their properties with putting in a, you know, affordable housing restriction, saying, look, we'll subsidize improvements to the property. Maybe that's something that could be done that's, you know, obviously not within our power. But, you know, I think if nothing is done that, you know, whether it's 10 years, 15 years, 20 years from now, overwhelmingly, you're going to have commuters, relatively affluent commuters, living in this neighborhood and just be a totally different population than what's currently there. And, you know, and my other editorial comment is, I'm not really sure I want all the houses in the neighborhood look like what's at 10 and 12 and the two are across the street. And it's, one, it's a totally different look than what's there today, other than the new ones. And a little creativity, it's, it's, you know, they, they look skinnier than they are because of the height, is I guess how I'll phrase that. And I'm certainly not an architect, but it's, it's a very real concern that I really don't want to live in a community that is overwhelmingly populated by rich people. You know, yes, in most definitions, I fall in that category, but I don't like people like the, oh, I did, that's, no, but I, you know, it is, you know, you know, I've lived in town since 1955 and have watched a variety of very positive things happen in town since then. And I'm very concerned with a lot of that being effectively reversed. Yes, we'll still have busing and yes, we'll have nights arts, but the diversity, particularly the economic diversity, is just being lost. And I, you know, maybe that's just the reality of who we are, where we are, but a lot of the positive attributes in town existed in the 1950s and attracted people coming from New York as they are now. And we didn't become a rich enclave at that point. But, and, you know, there are a bunch of economic factors that are beyond the town's control, but I think this is reaching a critical point that, yes, we need to make a recommendation, whether the governing body listens, you know, we'll have an election this year and that may or may not come out good or bad from the point of view of this, but it's something that we should at least voice. We're watching it, you know, driving down Washington Street, New Street, they don't look like they looked five years ago even. And some of it's good because there's a lot of substandard housing that isn't there anymore, so that's a positive. Returning to the application, which is why we're here, and the applicant wants to go home, Mr. Vetery wants to go home.
I appreciate all these comments.
Witness just, you know, he's here.
I spent a lot of time in the town myself here, working at the old brag shop on Church Street, making deliveries all over Montclair, and I've seen, I've witnessed it, the changes as well. And I think these are all good thoughts.
So, you know, I'm in favor of the application. They're renovating existing two-family. You know, we've approved similar, you know, the setbacks basically exist there. The addition will have the same setback variances that the existing house does. I, you know, the conditions to go, the fence should conform to the ordinance to meet the 4.5 feet from the rear corner of the house, the new rear corner of the house, that they adhere to the plans, the sheet, C. 02, that stated January 17th, 2024. So they comply with the impervious cover requirement. That they negotiate with the property owner to the east about putting a fence between the two buildings in order to preclude access. I'm not sure I want to require a light if they can't get there. Little nervous about the potential impacts of that, but on the adjacent property, and I think that owner might be more willing to agree to a fence and having a light, you know, but, you know, let's hope that works out. But even if they put the fence, so it goes to their property line, at least make it a little harder for people to get back, you know, in that alleyway. The, if it turns out that the building needs to be replaced, and I'm going to do the vague court decisions on what is substantial destruction of a unit as being, you know, if it would meet those court decisions, you know, and since the courts don't like 50%, you know, a street, that you have to come back to the board. If you do substantial changes to the facade, I don't want to do, you know, little window trimming changes, but if you're significantly changing to the facade, that you have to come back to the board, that the engineer design, the stormwater from the building, the walkway, so it is not impacting the properties on either side, six and 10, Washington, and that the sump pump discharge be designed so it's not adversely affecting those adjacent properties, and that the engineering for that be approved by the board engineer. I think that covers everything else.
And what the safe plan is and has to be built to that.
Yes, yeah, they have to adhere to the plans, including the one revised sheet. Any others?
I think it was that the home office will.
My reluctance there in this, you don't want to know my long history of people cheating on bedrooms for septic system purposes, exact same issue as parking, although a little more significant. I don't know how the town has any meaningful way of enforcing that. I, I, you know, I guess, you know, given the things that aren't enforced in terms of extra units being added, sure, I mean, it would be really nice if someone in code enforcement looked through legal ads and said, gee, why is they advertising an apartment in this building? Or why are they advertising this as a three-bedroom? But if you want, I just, I just.
I mean, if that falls into, you know. Parking.
Well, I might, okay, okay. So in terms of if, if they change the design so it becomes a three-bedroom, they have to come back to us. If the tenant who moves in decides we're having another kid and we're making a little nursery for the baby, but I think, you know, for whatever reason, they decide, oh gee, we, the market's there for a three-bedroom, not a two-bedroom, they have to come back to us.
Right. I guess the point is, if the home office has converted into a bedroom, then a parking variance would need to be required.
They, they have a, they already are getting one and it's, what's probably adding half a car per bedroom? It's not even that.
From RSIS, from two to three is like .2 or .3 cars.
Yeah, so it's not even adding a full car. I mean, technically, we would do the ordinance, you were drowned up and say you now need it for five spaces, not four spaces, but I, I think let's deal with when initially constructed, it be done as a two-bedroom. I, I think the advantage of the narrow distance to the property line on the east side is, with no windows, that somewhat limits their flexibility in terms of what they do without impacting the rest of the interior design. They, you know, they need to have windows for a bedroom, a window at least for a bedroom. So I, you don't know how many homes had an amazing number of dens and whatever when I was working in South Jersey to limit wastewater flows.
Sussex also.
We didn't let them do it, but that was a little easier to monitor. Okay. Any other conditions, comments? If not, someone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve with the conditions as stated by the chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, you want to call the rolls?
William Harrison?
Yes.
John McCullough?
No.
John Caulfield?
No.
Jay Church?
No.
Angela Harris?
Yes.
Jonathan Moore?
No.
Jerry Simon?
Yes.
Sebastian Viera?
Do I get to vote?
No.
No, I don't get to vote.
Okay. Well, it's three yeses and four noes.
Can we go in closed session for a second?
We could.
Okay, can you?
And we're going to go into closed session for.
To discuss?
Questions and anything else?
No.
Don't go away.
We'll stay here.
But, but you need to leave because there are less of you than there are of us.
We will not leave the building, but we will leave the room.
Yes.
Are you giving a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.